The board packet that Kelly puts together for us. And this one happens to be.
Lisa's on for what?
Great. I'm sorry, um, this one's got a lot of content in it. It's always a good idea to go through the packet. So if we come to the meeting prepared if there are any questions or things you want to ask about, we're ready to go so we don't sit here flipping through pages and spinning our wheels. Because we want to see this meeting move along. Okay?
Can I just add one more thing?
Yes.
While I'm being annoying. Um, also, if we could stay on topic, because I think the last couple of meetings, we've had some really great conversation, but we've gone way off tangent. And I'm happy to have long conversations with you after the meeting, but nobody wants.
We're going to stay on topic, that's why I have the gavel. Slam it down and we'll talk. Okay, so here we are at period for public expression. Is there anybody on?
No.
Hi, there anything you want to say? Okay. So, um, I'm sure everybody's had a chance to look at the meeting. Can I get a motion to approve the minutes from our January 17th?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that.
Okay. Moving right along, the report from the Friends of the Library. Oh, I know. Moving too fast. Alrighty. The Friends did not meet.
They meet in March.
They meet in March. Next month there'll be a report. Okay. Treasurers report. I didn't see that.
Okay, good evening, all. Okay. I'm on page five here. I'll try to make it short because I could get burned out at any moment. We're in a very rich position. We've got a million dollars, plus 4,312 in cash. That's checking money market. And I'm just making a note here, kind of taking homeowner approach. Then we cover our expenses through April if it needed to. But the fact is, it doesn't need to. I mean, I think a week after we closed the month, we got more than a million dollars from the district. So, there you go. But anyway, that's fine. Our investments at this point, 3,572,890. You'll notice that's up quite a bit from a year earlier. If you remember, we did make some additional investments during '23, and we also had a lot of growth. So that's good. Mortgage balance here is down the normal amount, you'd expect. And that matures in '29, end of December. So in the second part here, we're looking at activity for January. And in some ways, it was a really odd month. Let's look at that first. From a revenue point of view, it was an odd month. We got no money from the district, so that's zero. Whereas last year, we got 1,476,25. Contributions, though, we did better than last year. Financial income, we did substantially better than last year. The same month, about three times the amount of income. A little more than three times. Other incomes roughly the same. So the total revenue is totally different, but that's not a bad thing because we didn't get any money from the district. One way of looking at this is we paid all of our bills out of the cushion. You know, in terms of understanding like how our finances work, we had a cushion going into the year of about 1.2 million. We still, at the end of January, had a full million dollars in there, and it's still there now. Plus, we have the money from the, uh, from the district. If you look beyond the shaded line, the total expense for the month of January, we did spend a little bit more than January of last year, but not significant amount. I mean, a certain amount of that would be just accounted for by inflation. Higher allowance from the district, higher, we gave higher salaries, if you remember, to everybody. So I think that mainly accounts for it. It's really a, not a meaningful increasing spending. And especially if you look in part three at the year-to-date versus budget. You know, January, we always use these numbers, 8.33% of the fiscal year. And we spent 8.45 of the budget. So it's essentially like right on target. Nothing unexplained about it. Utility costs are always high in the winter. And we were, uh, we spent 18.74%. I, you may have noticed that as you went through. But again, that's, that's very typical. Last year, it was even higher, it was 19.8%. So we always go over in the month of January on utilities, and then we make up for it elsewhere. Nothing else? I think that I noticed that it was worthy of notice. If you had something that troubled you, let me know. It looked pretty straightforward to me. So you looked at the bills and applied payments and the bill payment list. You know, I personally saw every one of those checks and signed them. And everything looked fine to me. The warrant is not an unusual size, still under 100,000, which is common. And remember on payroll, now we have to get used to these new numbers. They're in the 44,000 area because we gave the raises, right? So 44,519,15, and 44,659,13. And all of that, you know, looked very straightforward. We just got to get used to the higher number. But of course, it's budgeted that way, so it's not a problem. I mean, one of the nice things is that our biggest outlays on a regular basis, the mortgage and the personnel, are very, very regular, you know? And they're in the budget, so we're fine. Any questions or comments or concern?
Thank you, that was a very concise report. Any question over here?
No, I'm good.
Okay. We get a motion to approve the, uh, the Treasurers' report and the warrants. We're going to approve it all in one, right?
Yeah.
I make a motion to approve the warrants and the Treasurers' report.
All in favor?
Who was the second?
I was.
Okay. Correctors' report, okay. I am going to be.
So if I remember, I will.
It's on page 37.
Thank you. All right. So, um, one of the things I always forget is how busy at the beginning of the year is, Wanda and I are continuing to work with Al Costa-Coster on the annual audit. We did the annual report to New York State. This year, I found a mistake that had to be reported to DLD. So I'm feeling very proud of myself. Usually when there's a mistake, it's because I've done something dumb. But as it turns out, it wasn't me this year. So it was, it was a glitch in the matrix, and other people across the state were having the same issue, and it was corrected. So yay. We've been working with the consultant and Lizardos. The RFP has to go back to Lizardos for a little bit more tightening up. We were sort of, um, stymied by school vacation and also, um, our consultant had a death in his family and then was sick. So, um, we've just, we've been a little slow. But we seem to, if we can get the RFP out by mid-March, which is totally doable, and back to us by the, we led, Lisa.
Yep.
And back to us by about April, February 11th, we are good to go, providing we don't have issues with formatting or anything else to have this project completed like September, October, and done by the end of the year. So we're, we're, we're in a good spot. At the request of the Building and Grounds Committee, I reached out to our clemmers to get a quote for replacing the water fountains with a bottle fill station. We have to completely remove those water fountains because you can't put a bottle fill station on the style of water fountain we have. I did ask them to price out the, um, the more standard model because if we wanted a water fill station that looked like the water fountains that we have, it's like three times as much. And I just don't think we need it. It also requires us to make, like, make sure we can put an outlet in that wall because those bottle fillers require electric.
The school, right?
Yeah. So I'm just waiting for SA Plumbing to get back to me. And once I have the specifics from SA Plumbing, I can take that over to the electrician and they can tell us how much that would cost.
Is SA the plumber you always use?
So is it the plumber? Yeah, Rob SA is who we always use. He also takes care of our backflow. So he's done backflow.
Are there water fountains on every floor?
No, just this one. Finishing touches for the children's room have been installed with the exception of the, um, the final nook, which is going to go on the backside of that electrical panel and under the Reynolds-Ruffens painting that is on the wall there. I just have to basically decide what color we want the front of the nook to be, which will be either the green, the orange, the yellow, or the blue that's used in that room. Those little samples came yesterday. And then, like, where we should be done with that also, I'm going to have Richard, I was going to have him do it yesterday, but I wasn't here yesterday. But tomorrow, we'll have Richard hang the mailbox for Suzanne the Dragon. I will start kicking that off as part of the summer because the summer theme this year is adventure awaits, and it just, it'll tie in nicely.
Where do you want to put the mailbox?
The mailbox is going to go on the, um, on the brick wall where the stair landing is, so the kids can actually reach in and mail it themselves, and it'll be accessible. If we, we didn't want to drill holes in the new bookshelf, and that would also be a little bit too tall. And we needed to, we finally found a spot that's like sort of out of the way. So if somebody's running down the stairs, they don't actually run into it.
And it's kind of, it's a.
It's flat, it's a flat, um, mailbox. John from G Craig came and looked at all the fixtures one last time to make sure that he had the right count, and we're doing what we're doing. A fellow named Ram is working with us on the reimbursements for the lights. So the vote that went out for the lights will actually end up costing us less money because we are going to get a reimbursement for that, to be determined how much. Wanda Anthony and I went to Library Advocacy up in the Capitol, February 7th. Wanda and I went up the night before. We met with Assemblyman Fred Thiel and Senator Colombo and explained in great detail that libraries have hit a tipping point and need to be fully funded by the state. We have not been fully funded by the state for a very, very long time. We're feeling good about this year because for the, um, as Elsa and Anna would sing, "For the first time in forever," I will not sing it, but I really thought about it. The governor actually put more money in the library budget than, I mean, it wasn't enough, but than in years. So we're feeling kind of hopeful that we're understanding all the things that that library.
Same, New York City libraries too.
It, it, it does, but it doesn't. So different libraries are funded differently across New York State. And I'm going to try and make this as, as, quite as, as small as I can. So for some libraries in New York State, that state funding is the majority of their funding. For some libraries in the state, um, it's a pittance, right? Our state funding, I think we get about 300, I take that back, $1,300, $1,600 from New York State to run the library for the entire year. The majority of that state funding goes to our library system. So if, ultimately, if the state funding didn't come through, we would have to cut system services where we would all have to pay higher dues to the library system. The New York library system is, is paid for by city taxes. So they, they care about state funding, but not nearly as much as they care about city of New York funding, if that makes sense. And so, let's see, the library was closed due to ice and snow. While I am no longer Nyla treasurer, I was asked to stay on, to be on the newly created sponsorship and fundraising committee. And then I was also asked by the Public Libraries Section if I would please, please be their president-elect because they did not have one. And I said, okay, because I'm a glad replenishment, but it's, it's far less than trying to figure out how to keep Nyla from going bankrupt, which is the situation I stepped into two years ago. I have also signed up, and I think you both signed, just signed the check, Ginta and Emily, to attend the Family Place Training at Middle Country Public Library in March. This is the first step to having J.J.M.L. certified as a Family Place Library. I encourage you to go online and look at familyplace.org to see what that does. We already do a lot of things that Family Place libraries do, but it's really about making sure we have all the resources and, you know, have, have a well-versed collection and developmentally appropriate toys and programming that supports parents and children and all of those things in the library. Every other library I've ever worked at has been a Family Place Library. So it's, it's a, it's a good thing to have. It's nice to have the banner on the wall. But I think from an educational standpoint, both Ginta and Emily would benefit from seeing the Family Place model and how it pertains to librarians as first teachers of children and language development and all those little kid brain synapses firing.
I thought it's good to have some really smart academic person who's been studying this forever give you the guidelines that you get to follow.
Yeah. And it sounds way smarter than me going, you know, it makes their little synapses fire, which is adorable, but maybe not quite as scholarly. Also, I have to say, I'm so excited we have a staff here that is excited to do professional development and go out to conferences and come back and bring that information back to Zach Harbor and find ways for us to implement what, what works in our community or things we've never thought of. So Ellie is actually going to be attending Computers in Libraries and the Computers in Library pre-conference. That's in Virginia. Catherine is going to be attending the New England Archivists, Archivists Conference in Rhode Island. Emily and I are going to PLA, which is the Public Library Association Conference, in Columbus, Ohio. I'm speaking at PLA with my colleague, Tree to Read, about diversity and inclusion in libraries. And Wanda is attending ALA in San Diego this June, which is very exciting. And, uh, and then I went to a whole bunch of meetings. Statistics, they, they are what they are. I do want to make a note, one of the things we've sort of talked about in terms of, um, programming is sort of looking at children's programming versus tween programming versus teen programming. And so we've started to break out between programming as its own set of programming. We've also talked about starting, um, uh, designating a space in the library to a tween-specific.
What's the sort of official age range of the tween?
Like, you know, I'm going to say nine to 12, but probably like 10 to 12. It's that, that, that fits six, or it's fit than six, you know, when, when they start to.
I know, but I didn't know if we had an official, like, thing.
So, um, yeah, we're sort of those, those, we would describe them as our older elementary school programs, perhaps younger junior high programs. Because sometimes, sometimes our seventh graders are sort of more appropriate for some of the younger.
Is there a model for this program for tweens?
I mean, the tweens have been around for, forever, ever. And a lot of libraries sort of do focus programming on tweens. Because again, and part of this is Family Place as well, like, having developmentally appropriate programs. A lot of our programs since, since I got here have sort of been like K through sixth grade. Well, you can't do a K through sixth grade program, it doesn't work. You know, so it's, it's really sort of starting to get into that mindset of, we have, we have sort of kid programs. We have younger elementary, we have older elementary, you know, junior high, and then some more high school.
It's nice for retaining the kids throughout the span of their life, you know, and things that are appropriate rather than too little for them or too.
Yeah, I mean, you see things like for, you know, grade K through six. No sixth grader wants to do anything with it.
Right.
And that's exactly, yeah.
That, I guess a well-coming out of Family Place Library, so you learn, you know, that'd be great.
Yeah.
Roadmap for that.
It is. It's good. And then also, I just wanted to sort of give kudos to, to Eileen and her social media because our TikTok viewers are way up. They are off the charts. With regards to the Personnel Report, you know, we still have our vacant positions, part-time clerk and adult programming librarian. I do want to give an update on both of those. I hired a part-time bilingual experienced circulation clerk on Monday. Her name is Brigitte. She worked for me, um, as a high school student and then a college student at Hampton Library in Bridgehampton. I had been thinking about her a lot. And I was like, you know, I think she's still around, I should reach out to her. And then while I was on vacation, she said, I've been thinking about, she sent me an email and said, I've been thinking about getting back into libraries. I saw that East Hampton had a job opening, but I thought I'd reach out to you first. And I was like, don't work for tennis, don't work for me. And then with regards to an adult programming librarian, something that came out of, of employee reviews, which I really, are less a, a review for, for me to say like, you know, you've been late 12 times or, you know, it's more about goal-setting and, and helping people grow here as, as an employee and have a good work experience. Nancy Meyer, who had, had worked at the circuit desk, came back and was doing confidential administration, administrative stuff. She's still doing that. And she had been working with Wanda on adult programming, said, I really feel like I can take over adult programming, and this is something I want to do here. So she'll be taking over adult programming, we're very excited.
So it says vacant there, but Nancy's going to be taking.
Nancy's going to be taking over adult program.
For Nancy.
Good for Nancy. And, um, and good for Cirk that we're going to have another bilingual, um, staff member.
So does that mean you are listed?
No. And we're close, we're close. We still have some, like, weird little pinch points where it would just, we don't need another person per se, but if somebody falls out sick or when there's vacation time, it sort of becomes an issue. We might bring in some seasonal help over the summer or, you know, bring in somebody hyper-part-time. We're going to see how, how things work out for now. But for all intents and purposes, as of March 4th, we will be, I will say, 98% staff. Does that sound fair? I still might be 2% of a person.
So do we have to make a motion to approve the Personnel Report? Do you want to make a motion to approve the Personnel Report?
I'll second it.
All in favor? I'm telling, I just have quick questions, go back into your statistics report. E-reference data basis, that's a big jump.
So, e. I just want to write down what.
The website, please.
So, yeah, so the, I'm going to say this with, like, in the nicest way I can. With regards to e-database use, all of the e-databases compile use in a different way. So sometimes it's how many pages within that website you view. Sometimes it's how many people went to that website. Sometimes it's unique users, sometimes it's not. And so there's no real, um, standard measure for all of our e-resources and databases. The other part of that is many of our e-resources are used by our librarians because they're library databases, they're not necessarily public-facing. So if Sue Mullen is working on a research project and helping a pageant with something, or, um, like Catherine is doing something in the archives on local history, those months you'll see a much bigger use because the librarians are using the library databases. And then sometimes it's just, there's no use because nobody's really doing a project, right? And that's, that's sort of the problem when we try to take things and do statistics, like, if there's no standard within the industry, then there's, there's, we're taking apples and oranges, and we're like, look at the fruit I've put on the page.
And moving this short, at some point, I want to talk to you how the laptop program is going, but not at this exact moment.
Perfect. Okay.
Oh, okay. So before we move to Committee Reports, I just want to thank Kelly for writing a beautiful letter to my next-door neighbor who you know, Stan Shore, turned 100, and he is still reading books on the, you know, about the only thing he really can do. So thank you for sharing that. Okay, I think this is the first time all the committees have met in a long time. Okay.
It's the beginning of the year, we go on, we get in here.
Personnel?
So Michael is the Chair of Personnel. Personnel did meet. We discussed that it is a contract negotiation year for, for me. We also discussed that Wanda was looking into what the costs would be for dental and eye insurance, and if there was a group, there's a library group policy that a lot of libraries sort of work as shared, like, it's a consortium, it's a shared. And what the cost would be for us to go into that. But also, um, I, I'll need to pull the county to see, to get an idea of how much different libraries are paying into those benefits. So once we have all of that compiled, that'll be a discussion by the Personnel Committee and also be part of our, our discussions when we talk about the budget for 2025. Can't be 20, right? We talk about the 2025 budget.
Finance and budget.
Yes, we met, we met at length with a lively meeting. I think I would, I will share some stuff with you about it at the next meeting in context of the Treasurers' report. We're mainly focused right now on planning for moving assets around to best survive the APAC project, which is looking pretty good because it's not really going to start for quite a while, right? I think that's what we're saying. So, but anyway, that's where we're focused on. We just want to make sure we've got money in the right place at the right time. And I'll go into that more next month.
Building some ground.
Building some grounds, Matt. We discussed the ongoing HVAC program, what's going on with that. And we also discussed the retrofitting of all the lights and everything, which we sort of retroactively decided, which we'll be talking about in new business.
Yes, and we talked about water fountains, sorry.
Yeah, we talked about water fountains, that's it.
Okay. Policy of long-range planning, with a lot of work.
Not twice.
Yeah.
The first, the second meeting will basically be for new business. But the first meeting, we talked about maybe a bit of a shift. So already, um, when we have financial policies, it goes to the Finance Committee to talk about. So we're going to start sending things that are personnel to the Personnel Committee. We are going to, I guess Nancy is going to combine together all the personnel policies and create more of a, kind of, employee handbook.
She, what, what Nancy's going to do is, so right now, if you go online and you look at our policy book, the formatting is, is not great because it's, for lack of a better term, a Frankenfile that has made it through many versions of Microsoft Word, and many hands have touched it. So what she's going through is spell-checking and editing all of the policies, formatting all of the policies so the format is the same. So like, all of the adoption and the revision dates are in the same spot. The titles are in the same spot. And then once she's done with all of that, I'm going to go ahead and organize it by, you know, something other than whatever we've got going on in the policy manual. And, um, I'll be putting together an employee handbook for review by the Personnel Committee.
So, one of the reasons why we are shifting some of these policies out of the policy and long-range planning is that this year, we're focusing on getting a long-range plan and system in place so that it can be done annually, it's supposed to be. And so, um, that's kind of, so that was the first meeting. We talked about kind of our priorities for which policies need to get updated. Three of them are, we're going to be voting later today. We also talked about the survey that goes up to the community. And that we'll also talk about, because that came up in the second meeting. The second meeting, we went over those policies. The other thing is that Kelly has pointed out, and I think she's right, it said, right now, if you want to look at our policy menu online, you get the whole thing. All, all 148 pages. So breaking up each policy so that you can pull out one at a time, one might also be the goal. So, um, and as I said, the second meeting, we're pretty much going to cover. and as I said, the second meeting, we're pretty much gonna cover in um, new business, but I suspect that's for the, for the rest of your, um, we will be needing.
Thank you. What you did, a lot, get a lot done.
We did get a lot done.
Survey, that was long meeting.
We have hard work. We have timelines for both.
Yeah.
Long range planning and for the policies.
Outreach and public relations.
I feel like we did not.
Yeah. Okay, so I was wrong. But the park met, we met uh, on February fourteenth Zoom because um, the executive suite at the park was surrounded by a sheet of ice, so unsafe um, to enter. So this is the time of year.
Being unseen inside.
Well, yeah, that's the whole story. But hopefully we will, the park board will have future meetings here, we can talk about that. Um, the school, this is coming year with a park uh, negotiates the contract with the school district. Um, but usually the increase never exceeds two point five percent, it has to stay under the cap. So they is tweaking details. And the park house where the uh, manager of the park grounds lives is so over a hundred years old. The roof was replaced a few months ago and I didn't know this all these years, that house never had insulation.
On the second floor, yeah. No, no way, sorry, yeah.
So it's been insulated, so that's, you know, huge. And then um, engineered mulch had, I'm not sure if it went down yet, but the new playground area that has to be re-mulched with every few years to for um, insurance liability, safety issues. So I'm not sure if the mulch went down yet, but that's coming. And then the last year, the Lions Club uh, renewed doing the Easter egg hunt and is doing it again this year on March thirty-first. And that's all the news that's been to tell. And um, ad hoc, one for the books.
Yeah, we met twice. So um, so one for the books, we've got a date, it's June fifteenth. We are charging twenty-five dollars per ticket. Um, we decided to put a price on it, not to make this a fundraiser, but more to get people to commit to showing up as opposed to signing up and then saying, oh, I, I didn't pay for it. We just want a little skin in the game. Um, right now we have three venues, the rotunda, uh, Tommy John and Andrea um, Scovani and my house. We have one author, um, Patty McCormick, who's gonna talk about um, mostly about why her book stolen is one of the top ten censored books in the country. And she wrote an amazing New York Times article and if you have not read it, um, you should Google it and read it because it's meaning, I would love to have one or two more venues. I think we done, we done, and we definitely need at least two more authors. So if anybody has suggestions on authors or anybody wants to volunteer their house for one for the books, you get to pick how many people arrive. Then that would be great. And um, oh, and Allison Huvon is also going to help us. Not including the authors. So she is a former board member, she's also been in publishing half a century.
Did you hear from her?
I didn't, didn't get a chance to call. I should have called her today because I actually have a meeting today, but I've got to, but I will call her.
Okay.
Um, I, I don't think she knew when the meetings, I think that was the problem. So I will contact her this week. Find out if we can get some more of her names. One for the books.
Okay, scholarship.
We did meet.
Okay, it was a brief meeting because they-
Very, we ran overtime.
We talked, really talked about how we're going to place the notices.
Yeah.
For the scholarship and um, we don't have a copy of.
The scholarship application?
No, the application.
No, I don't have a, a copy of.
So it's basically, it's um, privately funded scholarship and it's open to anybody who lives in Sag Harbor, a library card holder, it could be a student going off to college or somebody who's taking a gap year, you can be sixty-five years old, thirty years old, decide, you know, I need, actually if I took this program and the lottery, that'll help me get a job or, you know, some sort of auto maintenance or anything. So it's open, the application will be available in English and Spanish. Um, and that's it. They just have to write a, a brief essay up to a thousand words.
Uh, yeah, I think it's, it's, it's up to a thousand words.
I think so.
Um, and it's just how, you know, basically like, what's the plan? What is it that you wanna do? How will this make your life better? And um, it'll be in English and Spanish. Uh, since this is the first year, we're gonna put an ad in um, the local paper and in Vas Latina. Um, and then we'll send it out via, you know, e-blasts. We'll also make sure it makes it to um, the chamber members to share with their staff. And then also, um, you know, food pantry, all the usual, all the usual side foods.
Yeah. And it's two scholarships.
It's two scholarships. So the, the donor actually gave us ten thousand dollars so we could give out two scholarships.
So those are all the committee reports, all the business.
Alright, so uh, I already mentioned it, um, well, we're working on it. Um, and we're mostly on schedule, so um, and then we can move on to uh, the annual budget vote. So if you remember, we usually do this at the annual organization meeting. The school asked us to put a pin in it um, until they finalize their schedule for the next school year. Um, I have their blessing for our chosen date of Thursday, September twenty-sixth. So if somebody forgot my question.
I have a question for you on that.
Yeah.
Why are we doing, why are we doing it so late in the afternoon?
Two to eight? Because that's, that's what we did last year because when we looked at the only people who come in, in the morning, because I think we do it ten to, we were doing it ten to eight, were library staff members. And so the sort of feeling was, people can't come before work to do it.
Or we're open till eight.
Yeah, so.
I'll make a motion to approve the annual budget vote and trust the election date.
You have a good second.
All in favor?
So we, we have mandated trustee training back on here. Um, something that Diane and I had discussed was um, having everybody do the same training in person in the rotunda again, which I know was sort of part of the conversation last time and then people were like, oh, maybe I can do it virtually. But one of the things on my list for this library to do is to be certified as a sustainable library by the Sustainable Library Initiative. Um, and so Alex Blend, who runs the Sustainable Library Initiative, um, which is housed out of a cooperative library system, because this initiative came out of um, New York libraries, um, can come and speak to us on what it means to be sustainable, what it means to be a sustainable library. It hits all of the things that people wanted for, for uh, development, which is something that is in that two-hour window, um, is timely and is an issue that is important to libraries. Um, and then also, um, he can do it on a Monday night. So he is available. Um, I think Mon- Monday the fourth is a little too quick coming up on us, but he can, he can, we can do the training as soon as Monday, the eleventh. So your choices are either the eleventh, the eighteenth, or the twenty-fifth.
Few minutes to see.
Look at the cameras, everybody, and make a decision.
Now, I will say, if you pick the eighteenth, then you're gonna see me twice that week. You're, you're all gonna see each other because the next board meeting is the twentieth.
But it doesn't matter. Uh, which ones, um, Easter? Where's Easter?
Easter's towards the end of the month. Easter is the thirty-first, but I think school break is the first weekend.
Before it.
Is before it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it possible that I won't be available the twenty-fifth?
So the eleventh?
I'm away on the eleventh.
You're away on the eleventh. So the eighteenth?
Yeah. Yeah.
Or do it nighttime again or?
Yeah, we'll do it at nighttime and um,
There'll be food.
There'll be food.
Dessert or, or dinner type?
Four times, nighttime.
Um, what type, does six P M works?
Sure.
Okay, because you usually work Monday.
I'm getting on the eighteenth.
So we'll do the eighteenth at six P M. And uh, when we get closer to that date, I will ask for what's the, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about food. Um,
How much time are we allowing?
It's two hours. You are, you're required to do two hours. The topic is uh, sustainable library, at the Sustainable Library Initiative.
Okay.
I had a question. I got an email to my John Germain library email from No Before Training. Is that legit?
No Before Training, so when we-
I didn't click on anything else.
No Before Training, No Before is the, the, the platform we use for the sexual harassment prevention training.
Right.
It is also the platform we use for a lot of the cybersecurity and I T training that we do with the staff.
Okay.
And so when we push out, um, like you're all considered staff, right? So when we push out training, um, it pushes all of that out to you as well. So if you want to take the cybersecurity training, have at it. Have at it, it's not required. Um, the sexual harassment prevention is required. But if you ever wanna take any of that cybersecurity and training, you can. If you feel like you know all there is to know about sishing with a P instead of an F, um, then don't take it.
Alright, thanks.
Alright?
Yeah.
Kelly, were you able to get me?
Yes.
Clear it up on me?
Actually, I wasn't because I haven't seen Ellie until today, but yeah, you're good.
Okay. Um, on to new business. Okay, New York State Annual Report from Public Association Library.
Oh, that's a killer.
So, so saving, saving the one edit, which was um, I put Robin's email in incorrectly, which I will correct before I submit. Um, that's the annual report to public libraries. It's a bunch of numbers that if you're not the state, kind of make no sense. Um, so don't, it's, it's a report we do every year. We give it to New York State. New York State says, great, thank you very much. Our numbers are a little bit down this year, but as you will see in our note, part of the reason our numbers are down was we were, for all intents and purposes, closed for about a month. Um, and that directly affects our programming numbers. Uh, the other thing is, is um, in terms of our collection numbers, we did do a healthy lead of the collection. Um, leading up to being closed and while we were closed. So our collection numbers are just a little weird um, because of that, but that, that's explained in a note. It is what it is. You are required by New York State to approve this at a meeting, so.
Since you mentioned an address, one thing I noticed in there was that my, my mailing address, the address you have in there for me is my house, street address, and I received my mail at a post office box. And then I noticed that that's, I also, it's wrong on the contact list. I never corrected it because I didn't.
I use the contact.
But you know, if anybody still actually sends anything through snail mail, you have to send it to me at post office box four zero three Sag Harbor.
Let me.
So I'm sorry for that.
That, that's okay because.
The bigger question I have about that is I did try to, to weed through all those numbers. All the numbers that have to do with finance are coming from, are they coming from, they audited?
Yes.
Okay.
So the auditor fills those numbers out. So I take the financial portion. Um, I used to do the financial portion at, at Bridgehampton. And then one day, one of my colleagues said, oh my God, why are you banging your head into doing that? Because you can, because we have that information at Saint QuickBooks. She was like, I just make Al do it. And I was like, how? And he was like, we'll do that for you. Um, which, you know.
That was great. I just wanted to make sure that, I, you know, I, I didn't, I didn't double check. You know, I didn't know who's my responsibility to, to check any of this stuff. But if Al was doing it, then obviously it's fine.
Um, you're. Can I find it? What, what page are you on? I just wanna make sure.
What page, what do you mean what page am I?
You remarked.
Report.
Alright, P O box four oh three?
Yeah.
It's sixty-nine. Okay.
Thank you, sorry for the confusion. It may never come up, except the problem is Sag Harbor, you know, is if you put, if you don't have a mailbox, the letter, a letter will sit in the post office forever. Or they'll return to the center. And I didn't wanna have, you know, so.
I'm confident New York State is not going to reach out to any of you.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I, I don't, I mean, I'm like, but yes, so, so I will make those two edits and I will send that, I'm gonna send that report off before I leave tonight. But, but somebody's gotta make a motion.
I'm gonna motion to approve.
I'll second.
Hold on a second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the approval for the lighting. Do you want to say anything about that?
Uh, no, we're just doing that um, because I like, I, I like a little light in my life, we're doing that nunk pro tunk.
Right, so the lights seem to be, the lights are, the boughs are going, the lights are all, they don't carry a lot of the same things, so it requires a retrofit. And in terms, so when the builders and grounds met, in terms of timing to get things moving, we just, it was easier to sort of ask permission, you know, before the board meeting. So we have to vote on that, right?
Yeah, so this is just the official vote. So where you're going to adopt the resolution, and I'll help you with this, Lisa. The, the, basically it is resolved to, you know, adopt, uh, approve the lighting retrofit nunk pro tunk, which is now for that.
So what she said.
Okay, so.
Are you making that question?
I was gonna make that question. Kelly, did you say there was a discounted number on this now?
There is, but I don't know what it is yet until they calculate it.
It's like a percentage thing, or?
Yeah.
So we're going to make a motion for the retrofit.
Yeah.
Making a motion.
For the retrofit light projects, um, nunk pro, what is it?
Tunk.
Nunk, nunk pro tunk.
That's like the place in Connecticut. Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
I'll second it, okay.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Can we just vote on the next three as a group and register even more by not?
That's probably up to all of you.
Okay, has everybody had a chance to look at these? Is, or is it anybody who's unfamiliar with any of the um, free policies?
I have one question that I have, a quick question in lieu of, you know, a long topic. Do we have a lot of like unattended adult, um, the vulnerable adults who come to the library? Is that an issue? Or are we just doing that so that we have something in case?
To have something in place.
Okay, I just was curious.
Yeah, I would, I would say from time to time.
Yeah.
Okay, I just didn't know if it was a common thing or was.
Yeah, yeah.
A lot of libraries seem to have that, you see more and more of that.
Yeah.
The weekly movie, when they had weekly movies here before COVID, it was common.
Somebody will bring their dementia mother here, drop them off two hours and come back for them.
And, and it does, it does happen from time to time where um, we do have um, vulnerable adults who, who are here and we might not realize it until we realize it, if that makes sense. Like, there might be somebody who's, who's not a problem at all and ninety-five percent of the time it's not an issue. And then all of a sudden we're like, oh, like, hmm, you know, like.
So we're having a policy to make sure that you're having something in place.
Exactly.
All the policies are in the binder, it's going to be. So I, we can vote to approve these uh, three now, and then we'll do those community surveys separately.
Yes.
Okay, so can we get a motion, please, to approve the adoption of the updated sexual harassment policy? The unattended vulnerable adults policy and the shared workspace environment policy.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, so the politi, I mean, we really, everybody worked so hard on the um, and Kelly, of course, included in the community. Okay, um, so the polit, I mean, we really, everybody worked so hard on the, um, and Kelly, of course, included in the community survey strategic plan, which I think came out really great, but everybody had a chance to take a look at it, and we had, you know, we brainstormed all the possible places to, uh, present this, whether it's the library, online, QB code pantry, the chamber, the fire department, so I don't think anybody's gonna miss an opportunity.
We should make a QR code for it, too. We should make a
So we're gonna make a QR code for it. Um, the QR code will go in the next newsletter. If we feel like we need to, we can actually do a postcard mailing. Um, I can also look to see how much additional money it would be to put it as a slider into the newsletter. I'm not necessarily convinced that's a return on investment there, but it's something we could do.
The other thing is, it could be inserted into, um, the Sag Harbor Express.
If you did a QR code, you could do an ad.
You could do an ad with QR code in the express. The other, the other thing that we can, I just want to reiterate is, this is not the final look of the print version. We will make a pretty, and I've already spoken with Ellie for us to have it set up, have a QR code, so when people come to the desk, they can scan it, rather than us having a thousand print copies, and/or after programs, having a couple of iPads set up. So if you want to take it right away on the iPad, say yeah.
Um, what's your, uh, projected sample size you're looking for for the survey?
For the survey? Here's the thing, like, if you get, if you get ten percent of your, your population to get back to you, you've done a pretty good job, done an amazing job. Um, so
Ten percent of, of library card holders would be, I think that's, that's too wide a number there. I don't
Oh, I was just curious, since you had it.
And if, if you, here's the thing, if the decision was made to do a mailing, right, to all of the people who have a mailing address in Sag Harbor, that's like roughly eight thousand people, right? Um, no, it's not rough, roughly eight thousand. I mean, it is, but it's not. It's, our population is like eight thousand um, with the new study. So you figure mailing, if you sent out five thousand postcards, which I think five thousand is what we send out, if everybody in the household took that, you're back up to eight thousand, so ten percent of eight thousand is eight hundred. I do not believe we will get eight hundred back.
All right, I was just curious.
So, like a postcard with the perforated and you mail back?
No, like, I would do a postcard that says, we're doing the community survey. Here's a tiny URL that you can put into your computer and do it old school. Here's a QR code, if you want to scan it. Print copies are available at the library.
So if you do both digital and print, though, you're, you, like, just in all digital, you get the information continuously, but you have sort of a
Yes, but if, for people who want to do it in print, we would then have to take that information.
It'd be totally the data loss. Good for you.
Thanks. I mean, survey monkey mostly, but
There's a segment of our population that will do it on paper.
I think there's a large segment of, of library users who will not deal with that one. So
The only observation on, on, like, looking at it, again, you know, again, and, and in full, is that it's, it's, it's a really big hat, you know.
Yeah, it's twenty questions, which we, you know, we're trying to keep it.
Yeah.
What we kind of, the way we worked it as the committee was, we'll be at other ones that were done, and the information isn't really on the since one has not been done, something of this scale has not been done in a long time at the library. I don't think ever. We're kind of trying to get a lot of information. And if there's areas where you don't wanna, if you think we can cut back. The other thing is that some areas, like where lists what activities do you, do you most frequent use the library for, some of that is to tell people that we have these programs there.
Oh, sure. I, I, I think the, the teaching value of it's great, but the, the concern is, are people gonna get all the way through, or they're just gonna get
So here's the other thing, people are not required to answer every question.
Right, yeah.
So if you're doing it online, you don't have to answer it to advance. Um, and so you will see people who will skip questions, that they just, you know, some people don't want to, um, like, somebody doesn't want to take the time to answer a question, they're just gonna skip it.
You know, and somebody might come to question fifteen, and say, yeah, finally gets it right, you know, express my opinion, most pressing challenges, and somebody else will go, I don't care, you know? So it could be a pick and choose thing.
Well, the other observation I had is that, like, given how many surveys I've been asked to fill out in recent months, the fact that you got to the end of this whole thing, and you didn't ask me to make a contribution to the library. I thought that was really good. I was wondering, actually, if, 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 if it's, if it might be an interesting incentive to bring that up at the front. You know?
I think, I'm assuming that if there's a postcard or a sign with a QR code, it would have it there before going to the code.
Yeah.
Um, but yeah, it could be something to fill out the survey in your
Yeah, maybe you should move number twenty to number one. No, that's, they want to see the incentive at the, at the start. Say, if I do this well, we're gonna get some certificate.
Yeah, but then
But then somebody could just fill that out.
I like having it at the end, be like a little surprise.
Well, yeah, definitely, but that's what you get back, and when you're doing the raffle, oh, no. I don't know.
They know.
If, if you, yeah, I mean, I think, I think you're right. I mean, if it says at the, at the front, um, you know, all completed surveys are put in
I have a sentence that says that, so I don't have to move questions around.
Yeah, no, I don't move questions. No.
Right, I, I'm pretty confident I can have a sentence at the front.
Somewhere there.
Yeah.
Um, but
It better be.
I mean, it's general demographics, and then kind of library use.
Oh, it's fabulous amount of information, you know, you know.
If we, and, you know, I'm, I hope we'll get a couple of hundred. Um, that's kind of where we're aiming. If we can get more, that would be great.
I agree.
But we're mostly, you know, we expect to get people who are using the library. We're not expecting to get the person who's not using the library. If, but this could be a building block for trying to get them to get to them who are using. This is, this also, you know, this is step one. The next step would be some focus groups, and then people who fill this out completely, you know, we could ask to join some of those groups, especially if they've got a lot to say.
So I, you know, I would like to volunteer to, I mean, like, one thing that might be interesting would be like if, if board members, for example, would ask people, friends in the community, build the community to do this.
Yeah.
And it's favorable to them.
Yes.
And, you know, and, you know, I think that would be a cool thing, because they'd be more likely to do it, you know, if we ask them, just to, to get the bigger numbers.
Yeah.
I mean, my wife would do this, you know, but I, I think some of my neighbors would do it.
I'm assuming that everybody will, once we, once we have it out of draft form, and it's online, and we're going for it, then I am assuming everybody is going to be asking friends and
Yeah.
Or even going to some of the place, somebody's gonna go to the food pantry, somebody's gonna go to the ladies' auxiliary. I think that human contact, perhaps it goes a long way.
To personalize, to personalize that, we, we, we want your input, and, and doing that as personally as possible.
I could go somewhere, one of these places and sort of give like a pitch.
Yeah, I mean, I could go right to do that.
And I, I, you know, I'm, I would be fine, you know, being at, uh, in front of Scovini's and and stopping people on a nice, happy, warm Saturday afternoon.
And we have, um, and I think I already said this, but I'll say it again, Ellie's gonna work it out, so that we can take some of the iPads that are collecting dust and make them places where people can just answer it, you know, you know, like, when, when you go to, like, when you're leaving Destiny World, and they're like, do you want, can you take two minutes to fill out this forty-seven page? Except ours is shorter.
One thing I don't remember talking about is when are we closing the survey? Like, how
After the summer, like, in the summer, after the summer, in the summer. We did talk about it, it's on my timeline. It did not bring my timeline downstairs to this meeting, because we do want to capture our summer.
Right, right. Rather than Capture some of it, yeah. The summer is not, the, the goal is to get it out starting earlier.
Yes.
We can also be doing focus groups while we're still getting the survey.
Yes, that is the plan.
So you're talking like Memorial Day to Labor Day, or you're talking
No, 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 we're talking about next month.
Oh, so March to, like, September?
So much to, like, August.
Yeah, so if, if
Mid-August.
You all approve this tonight, um, then what we'll do is, I will take it, and I will give it to Ariselli to translate into Spanish. And then I will start to work on putting it into a nice little booklet. Um, you know, I don't think we're gonna be able to get it all front and back on one page. I think we might end up with four pager. Um, and then we'll have the print copies, we'll have the electronic copies, we'll put it on the website, we'll push it out via social media. If you're telling me to do a postcard, I mean, we can start with social media and, and print, um, and then look to do a postcard in the summer.
And we decide to do a postcard, then let's wait till the center, because right now, so many boxes are closed.
Yeah.
In one, so we have time on that, on the postcard decision.
And I think a QR code will go along, like
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, um, and then we'll post the QR codes sort of around the building, and every time we have a program, we'll remind people, hey, if you haven't got these taken out.
So we need to vote on it?
Yes.
Well, um, with the one change that you would add a sentence in the beginning, okay? So, um, can we get a motion to approve the community survey for strategic plan with the one absolute of a sentence? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Wanda, you have anything besides? Nobody showed up on
Nope.
Okay, we don't have executive session, and I get a motion.
I make a motion.
A motion?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn at seven eleven P M.
All in favor?
Aye.
Yay, well timed.
Well timed, yes.